Quite a bit of business to do today. And we've got to welcome the newest member of Pike County Fiscal Court and say goodbye to an outgoing member. So at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Freddie Lewis if he would say the invocation for me.
Heavenly Father, Lord God, as we come unto you today, we want to thank you, God, for this wonderful day that you've given us. Lord, we want to thank you for all your blessings in life. God, I pray that you would open up the windows of heaven and pour your Spirit out upon our county, upon its people. Lord, I pray that you would lead and guide and direct this fiscal court, Lord, to conduct the people's business that will be what's best for them. Heavenly Father, we pray, Lord, today for the lady that was tragically killed in the accident. We pray, Lord, that you would reach down and bless her family. We pray that you would bring them comfort this morning. And, Lord, we pray, Heavenly Father, for those ones that may be here that don't know you as their personal Savior. There's nothing else in this world that's more important than having a relationship with Jesus Christ. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity, and may we always be found doing your work. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Next item is authorization to appoint an acting fiscal court clerk. We have been notified that Lisa Ferguson has resigned as clerk effective 11/5/2024. And I want to thank Penny Burke. Lisa Ferguson has resigned, and Penny Burke has been acting as fiscal court clerk in addition to her other duties. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. We need a motion to approve Penny Burke to act as fiscal court clerk. Is there a motion?
Motion.
With a motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Commissioner Jim Absher if he would lead us into place of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we start into the actual business, I would like to welcome Freddie Lewis as the new member of the fiscal court. Freddie won the special election, and his election was certified yesterday. I want to welcome him, and I want to say thank you to Jim Absher. Jim filled the spot after Commissioner Orgo Blackburn resigned. And Jim, you did a great job. You worked hard, and I want to personally thank you for doing it. And the people of the county owe you a debt of gratitude for your work. So I'd like to ask everyone to round an applause for Jim and his service of the county. With that being said, you know, Jim has had a long history of service as a minister, deputy sheriff. He's worked in the coal industry, and he's just been an outstanding member of the county. And Jim, we appreciate it. And I want to say to you and Freddie both, this is the kind of race that we need to see more of. It was clean. I didn't see the first thing said about either one of you. You all were friends before the election. You're still friends, and that's just the way it should be. And, you know, there's elections every four years for a reason. So now I'm going to turn it over to Freddie. Freddie, a lot of people know Freddie. Freddie served as Pike County jailer and been a longtime friend of mine and will be a great addition to the court. Freddie, I want to turn it over to you, let you say if you just introduce yourself to the folks that might not know you, and you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Jed. So as the judge said, it's absolutely a blessing for me to be able to serve here in the fiscal court. I want to take this time and opportunity to thank each and every one of you that takes part in your elections. Regardless of how you voted, that has no clue or has nothing to do with how business should be conducted for our county. And, you know, I want to take this time also to thank Jim Absher because, just like the judge said, absolutely the cleanest race that I've known that's ever been ran as far as, you know, between two candidates, me and Jim. We talked all the time. His son, Dwayne, is like a brother to me, and I love Jim and his family. And I want to thank him for the professionalism for how this election and how this race went. It was tough as far as getting out there. This is a big, huge county, and if you've never run a countywide race before, I tell you, it will absolutely wear you down, and it really will. But I want to thank God for each and every one of the, you know, great people that I met out on the campaign trail. You know, Pike County is loaded, loaded with wonderful people. And, you know, so many times, you know, we hear about the bad stuff because that's what social media and the news media and all these people, that's what they want to throw at us, is negative things about people and about communities and about what's going on and all that. But I would say to you, get out here in Pike County. Drive around. Go to some stores, go to some restaurants, knock on a few doors, and you're going to find out that there's no better people on earth, just a lot of hardworking, good, honest people. And that's who I'm here today to represent, is the taxpayers of this county. And I want to always be found doing what is right and what is best for our county, our people, and our youth and children that's growing up in our county. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you, Judge, for turning it over to me and allowing me to speak today to each and every one of our people. And if you've got any questions, any concerns, anything that I can do for you as your commissioner, please never, ever hesitate to reach out 24/7 to me. And while I'm speaking, I want to ask my wife if she would to just stand up because I tell you, I want to give her hand today, and I'd like for you to give her hand for putting up with me and dealing with this race and dealing with me being gone all the time and allowing me to serve the people of Pike County. So, Holly, thank you. I appreciate that. God bless you, and we appreciate you. And please, if I can do anything for you, never hesitate to call me.
Thank you, sir. All right. We're going to move through this. We have, and Commissioner Lewis, we have a situation where we had a fire that destroyed the Greasy Creek Community Center back in the summer, and we have been working with our insurance company. And also, we had previously voted to hire Summit Architectural Services to construct or to design the new community center. And we're probably down the road of moving away from one of these log cabin-style community centers for multiple reasons. One is, we've had to replace all the decking, a lot of the wood structure on some of these community centers. It's just outrageously expensive. And we've got a lot of elderly folks, people with disabilities that use our community centers, and most of them have steps. So in order to make it more economically sustainable and to make it ADA compliant, to make sure, you know, somebody doesn't have an unnecessary file, we're going back with a ground-level building on a pad, which I think Kevin, that was Kevin Gillum, the architect's recommendation, and it just, all these facilities were built with coal severance tax. At, you know, one time, the county was collecting 12 and a half million in coal and mineral severance, and this year, we're probably not going to hit 2 million, are we, Frankie? I mean, it got down to about 1.1 million two, three years ago. And we saw a rebound during COVID where it bounced up to a little over 3.2, Frankie, somewhere in that neighborhood. And now it started back down, and the numbers for this quarter, I've got them on my desk, but they were way, way below. I mean, we'll be lucky to hit, what do you think, a million and a half this year, maybe?
Yeah, last quarter was up a little bit.
This quarter?
To offset some of this one, but yeah, we're still below budget.
So we're going to be below budget, and that's, you know, that means we're going to have to make adjustments. So my position is, if we're going to have these facilities, if we have to reconstruct one of them, it needs to be done in a way that's going to be the least financial burden on the taxpayers going forward. And if you build another log cabin, it's just going to be that much more expensive. So, but we had authorized Summit, and I think Kevin, you, and my Kev, proposal, we do not have to bid architectural services under the procurement code because it is a professional service, like engineering or insurance or legal, those kind of things. So their proposal, and I think Kevin, it's in here, to design it and engineer it, was $29,900. Is that correct? And most of this, we think, will be picked up by insurance. Bobby's been working on that. And so it would be my motion to retain Summit Architectural Services to perform the architectural and engineering work, construction plans, bidding preparations and bidding administration, construction observation services, and the plan review submittal with the project punch list and so forth. It'd be my motion to retain them for the price of $29,900 in authorization and also to authorize the county judge to execute all necessary contracts and documents as per this agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I do have a few. I do got a question on this, a couple of questions, actually. On this fee, the $29,900, is that just to design the building only? Is that just basically for paper design or?
No, it's to a paid design services, which is architecture and construction. Does that go to the state building code? And they require the same building code for this little community center as a new house?
Right.
Hey, Kevin, come on up to the microphone so that way the folks that are listening can...
Yeah, and maybe the size of the building as far as square footage, what are we looking at?
Well, we met last week and did a very preliminary kind of what we can afford and work backwards from the budget. And as of now, we're trying to do something around 32 by 60, which is around 1,900 square feet, which is about the same size as the original. We can't really rebuild on the original foundation because the original, well, first of all, burned down, so all the stem walls were ruined. And you'll never find a structural engineer in a million years that'll sign off on somebody else's foundation, so.
No.
So what we're going to do is, the idea of the judge and the court is to do a slab, which is the least expensive type of foundation. It's also ADA. We don't have to have all the decks and all this sort of things. But we have to resubmit this thing back to building code, and that requires an architect's stamp because this is an assembly building, over 50 people. You have to have an architect's stamp, an engineer's stamp on mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural. So we have to go through the Division of Building Codes Enforcement in Frankfurt. And so there's, I mean, it's going to be a lot of paperwork just to get this thing approved, unfortunately. But, yeah, that fee includes all the design services, the bidding services, the construction administration. We come out, we check the applications for payment for the contractors so they don't stick it to you guys. We also work with the, we do the contract for the contractor ourselves, and we work for you guys to make sure that nothing's done illegally or underhanded.
Well, I know Summit does great work, for sure. I've dealt with them for a long time. And that was just my only question was, you know, what does this 29,9 entail as far as, you know, compared to the cost of the building? What are we looking at as far as the cost of the building, you think? Probably 70, 80,000?
No, you're looking $200 a square foot. It's current construction cost.
Okay.
We're pushing, if we do 1,900 square feet, that's $380,000.
Around 380.
But the good news on this, this project is a little different because this is an insurance claim project, so hopefully all the costs will be handled by the recoup of the insurance money.
I mean, that's what shocked me was how much the building costs have skyrocketed with materials.
It's crazy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's ridiculous. I'll probably be the first to tell you. I mean, we do additions for schools now, and they're going for $400 to $500 a square foot, you know.
Yeah, I know. I just looked into a home here just a while back, and it really is, cost is very expensive. I just, you know, I just ask these questions in order to...
Oh, no problem.
Because, you know, I may be the guy at Walmart that runs into that coal miner that says, hey, how come you said that, you know? Or this lady says, gosh almighty, why'd you say? And I need to be able to tell my people that I represent why I voted for or why I voted against.
Well, there's a mountain of paperwork.
And if I don't know, I don't know what to tell them, you know?
Well, tell them there's a mountain of paperwork dealing with the government on buildings that have assembly, especially assembly spaces and public money, there's two, they really fine tune the building code on that. So there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Okay.
A lot of people, a lot of people have started, unfortunately, they'll start a construction project, they'll get shut down by the state, they call it the architect, and we'll come back in and work backwards. But in this case, we're doing it properly up front, so. And our fee is based on a percentage of construction cost, and if you divide the hours out, it's hundreds of hours, so it's not a lot.
Well, I thank you for explaining that.
No, no problem.
You know, that way everyone understands what goes in. I know you can go on Google right now and get plans for, you know, 5,000 square foot home for $1,500.
Right.
And, you know, that's why I was...
Well, this one's, this one will be custom. It's more, we're going to build this out of very durable materials, fire resistant, water resistant, and have hopefully a 20-year warranty on a lot of things, so it should last. And B, if we rebuilt this center as it was built, as it was built, the log cabin style, I would guess that would cost $600,000.
Yeah.
Because those cabin packages are so expensive, and they've quadrupled since we built those 20 years ago, so.
I mean, they're nice, but the upkeep on them is, you know, just too much.
Yeah, yeah. This will be low maintenance, low upkeep, and very, very, very energy efficient.
Right.
So that's one thing we have to do, so.
I should say that, you know, this is, this is a not-to-exceed lump sum.
Oh, yeah.
This is not necessarily 29,900. It's up to 29,900.
Up to, right.
Okay.
Could be less, but not to exceed that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you. I appreciate you answering the questions.
So Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is this Kemper Storage Building that is being paid for. Sharon, you'll just, the source of this, just refresh my memory. Yeah, so, what was our match on that?
There was no match.
So no match?
The match on it, you can only apply for up to 750,000, of course, really before the match, so the county fire department is paying, you can call it a match.
Yeah, because most CDBG... Okay, but most CDBG has a match. I'm just trying to figure out. This one did not.
Well, it's a facility based on low income, and the legal is 750,000.
Okay.
So the project came in, the bids, I mean, the sum, 898,000. So Kemper Fire Department agrees to pay that. They gave it to them anyway, they pay anything over.
Okay. So this is a storage building that really, it's called a storage building, but it's used by the fire department at Kemper. This was put out for bid. Summit was the project engineer on this as well. The low bid came in to Cesco Builders, by Cesco Builders, for the sum of $724,800, and it would be my motion to award the bid for the Kemper Storage Building to Cesco Builders for the sum of $724,800.
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Where I'm the new guy, I guess, I'm just, this is a learning day for me, and I'm trying to gather all this up. Do they have, are they like a copy of the actual building that you have, like, itemized breakdown of it?
You could have one in your package.
Are they an itemized breakdown of the...
Go down.
Oh, shit.
You just said the second piece.
It was six. You're being sexy. Might be that one.
Spire with me, I'm sorry. Okay. So this is the breakdown of it and...
It's not got all the bid documents in it. They didn't put, they don't, we normally don't put the bid packages in here, but it was, it was put out for bid under procurement code, advertised pursuant to statute. The bids are opened in the public meeting. The bids are received by the clerks, they're opened in public meeting. The county attorney is a representative here. And the low bidder was Cesco Builders by almost, you know, a little over 75,000.
Well, congratulations to the fire department because they definitely deserve it and need it. I'm a yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is my nominations for appointments to the cooperative extension officers. Two vacancies. It would be my motion to appoint Mark White to first vacancy and reappoint Kathy Harville, who is, I think Kathy's chairman of the board, as the vacancy in the second seat that is up. These terms will begin January 1st, 2025, and expire December 31st, 2027. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is the county has a vacancy on the Pike County Airport Board. Half of these appointments are county, half of them are city, and it is my motion to reappoint David Hutchins as the, as a member of the Pike County Airport Board with a term expiring 11/1/2028. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the acknowledged receipt of the audit of the Pike County clerk for the year ended December 31st, 2023. Frankie, have you had an opportunity to review that? Okay, so the clerk had a clean audit. We want to congratulate Clerk Darrell Pugh on a successful audit. So it would be my motion to acknowledge receipt of the audit of the Pike County clerk for the year ended December 31st, 2023. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Go ahead.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is, we have several of these leases on various properties that we have for, with the state. And the first one is approval to renew lease PRO 4471 with the Finance Administration Cabinet for, this is 36 Mingo Street, Phelps Courthouse, and this is for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. It's a one-year lease, payable $5,400 annually. They've been there. It helps keep, where the cabinet can have an office in Phelps. So is there a motion to approve or renew this lease for the Cabinet for Health and Family Services for the sum of $5,400 a year?
Yes, I moved.
We got a motion by Commissioner Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is a motion, is there a motion to renew lease PR 04387 with Finance Administration Cabinet for a property located 25230 US Highway 119 North, Suite 111. It's the Belfry Courthouse. Again, they've got a Cabinet for Health and Family Services has an office there. That lease is for the sum of $9,990 per year payable in quarterly installments. Is there a motion to renew that lease?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Next item is approval to renew lease PR 03214 with Finance Administration Cabinet. This is the state police firing range up on Coal Hollow at Island Creek. This is where the state police and city police and different agencies, sheriff's office use for their firing range. There's, we never charged for that. To my knowledge, there's never been a charge for it. They just have to have a lease for the property. So is there a motion to renew the lease for the state police firing range, lease PR 03214 at no charge with the Finance Administration Cabinet?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval to renew lease PR 05604 Finance Administration Cabinet, and this is for the Department of Juvenile Justice here on the third floor of the county courthouse. The sum is $22,512 a year. Is there a motion to approve renewal of that lease?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is, this is adoption of resolution authorizing the filing of a flood control match program grant in the amount of $99,779.43 to be used as matching fund for the Levis Fort Basin Coal Run Flood Risk Management Project and approval to execute all documents related to the grant. This resolution supersedes the court order of 102224002 and court order 082024005. Sharon, Jimmy, y'all want to come up and explain this real quick? Somebody can.
What happened was the flood project got more funding from the federal government on the design of the flood control project, and as that money increased, the match, of course, came back around, and the state had paid our match before, so we requested that they pay it for us this time, and they changed the num, actually, they just got more funding than they thought they were going to get. So they've changed the amount of the match a couple of times, so we're hoping that it's correct this time. They just ended up getting more money. So that's all that is, and DLG will pay that for us.
Yeah, so Commissioner Lewis, this is money that, this is the flood wall project and the flood mitigation project for the Levis Fort that would build about $120 million-plus flood wall behind part of Coal Run, raise some homes, relocate some homes. There's a, it's basically, we're in part of the program, and Jimmy can correct me if I'm wrong, the federal government picks up 95% of it, the local government has to pick up 5%. Historically, the state has picked up the 5%. 90, is it, they picked up 95% of the 5%, right, Jimmy?
Right.
Some places now, it's a 50-50 match or something now.
70-30 is equal.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so essentially, what this is, is we got in, into the program initially when it was a 95-5 match. And then the other communities that came into it ended up with a situation where the match was, I was thinking it's fifty, but Jimmy says seventy-thirty for some communities, sixty-forty for others. The five percent, that local match, the state has historically picked up ninety-five percent of that five percent. So it's a de minimis amount. My position is that this, you know, there's not too many hundred-million-dollar-plus construction projects. It would put a lot of people to work. It would generate a lot of occupational net profit tax as well as raise some of the property values in, in Coal Run because it would protect properties that are currently in the flood plain. This is basically referred to, I think, Jimmy, as a structural project because you're building a flood wall. And then they have non-structural components which would be optional buyouts or going in and raising homes like they've done over in the South Williamson area and Phelps area. The project is a long way, I say a long way because the government moves slow, but it's probably years away and it's going to depend on funding. Paintsful, Paintsful's working on a similar project. I think Louise is working on a similar project. Congressman Rogers has done a fantastic job of trying to get the money for this, but as you know, money's been high. And so it's going to depend on if Congress funds the program fully or not. And then what we did is we got about, we went to Frankfurt, we were able to get six-hundred and something, six-hundred-and-eighty thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand from the Bevin administration. And we've spent that money, it's really been at no cost to the county.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we've done, just like this grant for the Kemper Fire Department, instead of just dipping into air coffers to do it, we've been very aggressive in going for grant money in, in trying to maximize the resources. And Sharon, we've probably brought in, since I've been judge, why do you say, how many million dollars have we brought in in grants and other outside funds?
Probably around twenty-four million.
Yeah.
I can give you at least, we're still working on a lot of those projects.
And we've still got a lot of grants, I mean, so we brought in twenty-four million dollars that prior administrations weren't even doing that.
Yeah.
And we, we, I'm not sure that even counts, the money that Fabian's been able to get for the road department for emergencies, discretionary projects and stuff. You know, there were just, nobody was asking for help. And we've been able to do a lot of stuff and get the county's finances straightened out, in part because we've been getting some help. But like I said, if you don't ask for it, you don't get it. So Sharon's done a great job on that, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
So anyway, is there a motion for adoption of the resolution as previously stated?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item, Greg, you got anything? All right.
Judge, a few weeks ago, we had one of our eleven-yard Packers with our solid waste department that was involved in an accident. From what I understand, the truck has been sent to get repaired, but I think they're still waiting on the CAKO money to come through before they can start on it. So it's going to be out of service for several more weeks, not sure exactly how long. So the solid waste department is short a garbage truck. I kind of looked through our capital plan and saw where we had an eleven-yard Packer in our capital plan. So I kind of started reaching out to see if I could find something we might be able to go ahead and, and put in service. I was able to locate an eleven-yard Packer through municipal equipment. It's a Peterbilt, like the other trucks we have, eleven-yard Packer, and has the, they've agreed to, the, the total cost, it's on state contract, the total cost for this package was right at about two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. They've agreed to include the cost of the Perkins wide-mouth tipper and installation in that. That's about twelve thousand dollars they agreed to include in that price. Also negotiated down another, about another three thousand dollars. So instead of being two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, we can actually buy this Packer complete for two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. The truck is available right now and we could probably take possession of it within a week or so. That would help out the solid waste where they are short that truck. It'd be my recommendation, we buy this eleven-yard Packer through municipal equipment for a cost of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. It is on a state contract and it is in a part of our capital plan for this year.
Do we, and this may be a Chuck or a Darren or J.J. question, do we know how much damage was done to the one that was in the wreck?
Chuck knows more than I do. I thought I heard, I thought I heard Chuck say about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Twelve or thirteen thousand.
Is this, which, this is the one that was in, that was hit by the coal truck?
I don't know, Judge.
Was that what the damage was, Chuck? Was, was that, what was the estimate for the repairs?
I don't have any repairs.
It was quite a bit of damage to it.
There was quite a bit of front end damage. We had, I know the leaf springs was broke, the.
Control arm.
Control arm, or the steering control was broke. Had a fuel tank busted. There's, there's quite a bit of front end damage.
Was that Brian Daniels, this truck?
It was.
So, so let me, let me say this, and I want to say this, I think it needs to be said. There was some concern of members of the court about these cameras and showing the drivers. People, you know, some of the employees were complaining about it. We've had two wrecks in the last month that, that these cameras clearly showed that air drivers were not at fault. And one of them is a very serious injury accident that took place a few days ago. And it clearly showed the air driver was attentive, he wasn't distracted, he wasn't on a cellphone. Because Freddie, one of these, one of the cameras shows the driver and one shows the road. And it clearly showed that the wreck, both of these wrecks were not our fault. And, you know, the, the one that we're talking about here with this damage to this mini Packer, this eleven-yard Packer, I mean, if you looked at the final rest and you didn't know what you were looking at, well, you could say, well, that garbage truck's on the wrong side of the road. Well, the garbage truck was on the wrong side of the road after impact because the whole front, the whole left front wheel assembly is knocked out. And when it knocked it out, it pulls it this way. And, but those cameras are going to help us get the damage to our vehicles fixed and will be clearly dispositive if anybody tries to bring a claim against the county for any reason. So.
So that was the wreck at A Flax, is that correct?
Yes.
When he was sitting over the guardrail. I mean, God really blessed those guys.
Those guys could have been.
That could have been a horrible, horrible turning.
That could have been.
And our guys weren't, they did everything they could.
They were very blessed.
They weren't speeding.
No.
They were doing everything they could, just like the asphalt, the road department truck that was in the wreck, was it last week, I guess? So.
I actually use that as a training. I mean, he's done everything he can, but still chose, you can do everything for, for him to still be involved.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's a training, it's, it's, there's a training element to it, but it also protects our drivers. If they're, if they're in the ride, they're, it protects them. This is a truck that we, what we tried to do, Freddie, when I became judge, there was no plan in place on how you replace this stuff. They would go out, if you remember, they bought all those Dodge mini Packers that had the gasoline engines in them. They buy them all at one time, they all wear out at one time. Of course, those things, they couldn't keep on the road. So what we've put in place is, is a capital acquisition plan to where we're replacing this stuff so it all doesn't wear out at the same time. And so this is in the budget. And if it's on a state contract or a purchasing cooperative, we don't have to bid it. So you've got this for what, Greg, to go, it's two-twenty-four, five-twenty-six delivered?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So is there a motion to purchase this Peterbilt garbage truck to replace one that's going to be taken out of service for the sum of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars?
So I'll, I'll make a motion.
And authorization to issue payment for the same. I'll restate that, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that. And I, during my motion, I'd like to add this also about our solid waste department in Pike County. I'm going to be honest with you, it's probably, if you've never been nowhere else and lived, we, we have the best solid waste department in this state for sure. You know, our guys, they work really hard out there, they're always out there picking up whatever you put out. You can put out refrigerator every day, you can put out a stove every week. They're going to get it and they're going to go, and that's going to be the end of it. You go anywhere else, there are certain times you're allowed to do that, you're going to pay a certain fee for that. White's good, it may be fifty more dollars on your bill a month. So, you know, our solid waste department brings a lot of money into our county. They do a really good job out there. And I want to brag on those guys today because they, they deserve it. They, they got a hard job out there and I appreciate them. You guys do a good job, Chuck.
All right, so we got a motion by Commissioner Lewis, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Is that all you got, Greg?
Pardon?
You got anything else?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Something else that we have in our capital plan this year is another, one of the four-twenty backhoes. We've bought, I think, three over the last two or three years, and this one was in the capital plan for this year. We actually had a four-twenty that sustained a lot of damage that's actually out of service right now. We had this on a capital plan, so I wanted to check availability on another four-twenty since it was in the capital plan. Boyd Equipment does have one, it's on state contract. The actual price of this is two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. The Kentucky Master Agreement discount is twenty-five percent, which is fifty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Boyd Equipment is giving us an additional multi-disc, multi-vehicle discount of fourteen thousand nine-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Something we always do on equipment like this is we get an extended warranty, which is a forty-eight-month, four-thousand-hour premium warranty. That includes travel time and mileage coverage. Also a service agreement, which means they'll do all the service and so forth on this piece of equipment for forty-eight months or four thousand hours. I also got him to give us another service credit of a thousand dollars that we can use on anything that we get done by them. The total cost, including the warranty and the C V A agreement, would be a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. And again, this is on state contract and is a part of our capital plan.
So Commissioner Lewis, we have replaced, Fabian was just telling me, the one backhoe that was damaged is back in service. The, we've replaced every backhoe on every road lot except this one, we've replaced one of them. The only other block backhoe that we've not replaced is a sort of a newer one when we came in, and it's still in pretty good shape. So this will complete at least for the next several years than the county's need, assuming that there's no damage, you know, someone that get wrecked or something. This should take care of the county's needs on the road lots for backhoes for, for some time. Probably ten years, county will be not having to deal with one, so.
What lot does that go to?
That will go to Belcher, Belcher Road Lot.
Yeah, that's, but I don't have a good-looking backhoe.
Because the backhoe, the one backhoe we're not replacing is the one at Marvone, but it was only a year old when we, in nineteen, so it's still a good, it's still a good backhoe. Not had any problems, I don't have no service issues.
Don't hate, just.
We have exactly.
You just cursed us.
And you've had pretty good luck with these back, this model, right?
Yeah.
Well, you know, there again, I mean, our people needs the tools and the equipment to do their job with. You can't go out here and do work if you don't have things to work with, and I totally understand that. And I know you may think I'm asking a lot of questions here today, but let me explain why. I want to be able to answer my constituents and the people that voted for me. If they run into me at a restaurant or run into me out here on the street and they say, why did you do that? I have to give them a good answer and detailed answer of why that I voted yes or why I voted no. Because those are the people that I answer to, right? As an elected official. So I don't want nobody to think that I'm, you know, trying to get, you know, into somebody's business or I'm picking on somebody or nothing like that. Please don't think that. It's just, I want to be held accountable and I will be held accountable by the people. And that's why I ask questions.
And crucified.
And, and crucified and held accountable now. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that I'm, that's why I'm asking questions, you know. So, yeah.
So is there a motion to purchase this backhoe with a, with the stated discounts under the Kentucky Master Agreement with the forty-eight-month, four-thousand-hour premier warranty for a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents?
I'll make a motion, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Actually, we got that a little bit cheaper than the ones we bought, yeah.
Greg, when can we pick that up? Fabian's wanting to know.
I'll have to check. I think it is available, but I'm not sure exactly when, Fabian.
Commissioner Atkins, the reason that it was cheaper, you're right, it was, but this backhoe did not come with the clam bucket on the front.
Yeah.
I mean, although, you know, that's a great accessory to have, I mean, it's not mandatory.
No, that's what I said, it was a little bit cheaper, you know.
That's why it's cheaper.
Yeah, we saved a little bit of money on that.
Yeah, we saved money.
I think it's worth the way it can go.
Oh, yeah.
That's the handiest thing you've ever had on that.
Yeah.
I agree.
I know.
Yeah, but that's why.
What would it cost to put one on?
Well, that would have, we would have to go back to, to the, to Boyd and find out what, how much it would cost to put it back on, to put one on.
They are real handy, like.
Oh, yeah, they are.
You reach out, pick up any time.
I think one of the things is, because this other backhoe was getting some work done on it, we were short a backhoe. They had this backhoe with this bucket, and Fabian more or less said he didn't have to have that clamshell bucket right now, but he really needed the backhoe right now. So we thought we'd buy it like this, if we need to go back later and buy a clamshell bucket, we can.
And that was a thing also, that's what Greg said, this one's sitting there, so basically, we can, we can pick it up pretty, pretty fast. And so that was another reason we wanted to go ahead and try to make a move and get this one because it's there and ready. We don't have to wait three months for it to, to get.
All right. Next one, Greg, you got one more?
Yes, back a few months ago, with Sharon's work, we were, we were awarded a composting grant. It was a pretty significant-sized grant. It was to buy a whole tree chipper, a Vermeer mulching head, and an air curtain burner. The total amount in the grant was seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. After it was awarded, they went ahead and sent the court a check for that amount. But when I actually purchased those three items, I was able to do some additional negotiation and saved forty-three thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. If we didn't spend that money on something, that's money we would have to send back to the grant money. I kind of looked through our capital plan and see if there was anything else that we might be able to get approved to purchase through the composting grant. Something I came up with was the saw blades that we use on our A T, A T Max mowers on the road department. We bought four of those last year and we bought two sets of blades, or we bought them a couple of years ago. We bought two sets of blades last year to see how they work. From what I understand, Fabian told me they did a real good job. So we put two more sets in the capital plan. I would also like to mention that we, we bought those mowers and this equipment from them through a, a Bi-Power Co-op. Last purchase we've made from them, they are now on the Kentucky State Contract. And from what I understand, K T District Nine and K T District Ten have also bought the mower maxes like we bought, and they like them real well. These are, these are saw blades, there's actually four blades. They hang on the boom of the mower and we're able to go in the wintertime and cut canopy back in these hollow roads. And they, they seem to work real well. The total cost of two sets of these is fifty-nine thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. I submitted that to Sharon and Sharon got it approved to where we could use the other forty-three nine-sixty-eight from the grant as payment on these. So we'll get the full amount of the money from the grant. And the additional cost, it will cost the court is fifteen thousand six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents to purchase these two sets of saws.
Yeah, so Sharon, Sharon applied for two different grants for equipment for the landfill, and we. Yeah, so Sharon, Sharon applied for two different grants for equipment for the landfill and we got both of them. So we'd asked for a burner, an air curtain, some other items. Well, when we won the one grant, we went back and asked them if we could use the other grant for additional equipment. We're looking at a boom truck and some other stuff for it. So most of this cost is gonna be picked up by what's left on that one grant. So is there a motion to purchase the items as stated from AT Max equipment? For the sum of fifty-nine thousand five eighty-four ninety-two with most of that being picked up by the grant?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions or discussions? Seeing the Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge. Thank you.
Next item is road supervisors' report. We have the completed and scheduled work orders. These will be posted on Pike TV as usual. And then is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing the Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes. At one time we're talking about the road supervisors' report. Fabian, I do have a question for you. And it would really help me out a whole lot, but me and my wife went down to Tennessee after all this flooding took place in the North Carolina and we seen the devastation and, and what those people down there went through. We, we stayed there for around a week and worked with them and it was a horrible, horrible, horrible sight to see. Chimney Rock and all those. And as I drive throughout our county, you know, I notice that our creeks, and this is something that is nobody's fault. It's just something that unfortunately due to the federal and the EPA, I'm sure. All these things, they have basically stopped us from our way of life in a lot of ways. You know, we live in eastern Kentucky in the mountains. We don't live in the middle of Louisville. We don't live in New York City. Our people has a different way of life and there's things that we have to do in order to survive in the mountains that maybe people in Louisville or New York don't have to do. And one of the things is to ensure that our creeks don't wash us out of these haulers. And I was just wondering, is there any way, Fabian, that we could, and this may have to be brought up another, at another time. But one of the things that I was wondering about, is there any way, can we, can we like dip our creeks?
Yes, and honestly, we do. The, one of the things is though, is since we've been in, we've not really got to do our preventive maintenance. And that's where I would call this would be preventive maintenance.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Because we've had so many other events. How many painful events we had in six years? Anyway, it's been quite a bit. So we're still working, like in the twenty-two, that, that July twenty-two, see, we're still working on that flood. So what's happened is, is we're having to do this emergency work and not be able to do our.
Preventive maintenance, yeah.
Because it's the same thing goes with like ditch line. You know, when I first got this job, my thing was is every ditch line in the county would be pulled once a year. I've never got to do that.
Right.
Because right when I came in, you start having these events happen and it pulls you away, so you know, you're not able to. But yeah, we can dip the creeks and honestly, we will. It's just getting the time and being able to do that. And, and we've been doing a lot of that in the off season. What I call off season is like this time of year, like when we're not paving. Then we can, that's where we get in, we'll start doing a lot of the creek.
Doing a lot of creek. Well, that, that makes me happy.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but any of those that you have, just bring to me. I mean, you just tell me, let me know and we'll get them on, on the list.
Well, I appreciate that, Fabian, because we do have, there's a lot of creeks that's running level almost with, with our roads, ain't they? I mean, and, and I was just thinking, you know, maybe due to the EPA and.
Well, you, I mean, some of your big creeks like going up Palm Creek, we can't do.
No, 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 it's holler creeks, all of them, yeah, yeah.
But the big problem is when these haulers get into the creeks, like there's places up on Palm Creek that you can just about step, take a step off the road into the creek.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's almost level, I mean.
And, and you know, it's, there was a meeting over there, we had, I'm thinking Karen Kelly came up, Congressman Rogers' office. The problem is, obviously there are water quality issues and Army Corps issues because anytime you're messing with the floodplain. But there's no funding to do a major, I mean, to dredge the creeks, Shelby Creek, Palm Creek, Peter Creek. Just, you know, Elkhorn Creek or major, the major creeks in the county.
Yeah.
It would cost hundreds of millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And there's no, there's no funding for it and there's nowhere to put the material.
No. Well, it's, it's mostly, what I'm seeing mostly is, you know, county roads up in these haulers and stuff like, you know, that's. And that's doable, right?
Oh, yes, it is.
That's very, very doable.
It is very, and that's something that we would, you know, we would say is our preventive maintenance. It's just like I was saying though, when you get to more like that emergency work, like I said, we're still working out in that area also on that flood of, of July and we're just now finishing up that, because there was one in January also and then we had that one in July. So we're just now finishing up the January and moving into the.
You guys have done some really, I mean, you're just like solid waste department. You guys do great work. I mean, your people out there.
I promise, we, we do have some great guys that work.
You've got some great guys on that road department, wonderful people.
But you've had four flood events in seventeen months.
Yeah, you went through the wringer there. And, and that's what I was just trying to look at being, you know, proactive on these things.
Absolutely.
Because it's, it's too late, you know, once a, a hauler's washed out and people's lost their homes and stuff, you know, and, and that's what I was just looking at. Could, could we be proactive on that?
Sure can and bring those to me, make me aware of those and we'll get them on the list.
Okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate that.
The only thing that I wanted to say is in my, is that Tuesday, we will begin paving on Miller's Creek. I'd like to really get that out there because that road is such a heavily, heavy traveled road. It's, you know, for the traffic. So if at all possible, people instead of coming through Miller's Creek, taking alternate route or something and because it'll probably take us probably three days to pave that. And that's a long section and it's very wide, so you're basically gonna pave it twice.
Do we have a long boom excavator by chance in the county or?
No, we do not have.
So you would have to, if you had to use a long boom, you'd basically get a rental, I guess, or?
Yeah. Oh, the other thing, Judge, is you had asked me the last court meeting about the mileage that we had done since two thousand nineteen on our paving. I'd put that in here. So two thousand nineteen, we done fifty-one mile. That was the first year that we paved. Then we went to forty-seven and we was able to do seventy-one point fifty-five mile. And we was able to do seventy-five. Last year we was able to do sixty-seven. And this year we're on track that we, we will hit this number. Right now, we've only laid thirty-eight, but we'll, we'll hit the fifty-three mile.
And part of that's because we had trouble getting blacktop. Because, because they were paving the new four sixty and they had priority. But we're right at, we're right at. Fabian's number's a little bit different than mine. I had. No, because she had added this. It's the difference, it's fifteen miles. I've got about three sixty seven. We've paved, we get this, we hit the target, we'll be about three hundred and sixty-seven miles of blacktop in six years. And the reason that's important is when I came in, they were paving maybe twelve miles a year. And that, when you have a thousand miles roughly of county roads, you're on about an eighty-year pavement cycle, eighty-five year. So we will have paved a third of those roads in six years. So we have substantially reduced that because some of these roads hadn't been paved in twenty, thirty years. And we, like I said, we've been real aggressive. We, you know, we have used some single county money on that. Some of these roads were not, there's roads if we hadn't taken the steps that we have that would, would be like driving on washboards. And, but you know, I think by the time this term is up in two years, we should be, you know, well over four hundred, maybe four hundred and fifty miles. So, you know, in eight years, if we can, you know, if we can pave half the county's roads or close to it in eight years, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good improvement over eighty-five years.
That's real good.
Yeah. And, you know, we've tried to prioritize doing it in the worst, you know, the worst first. But we also tried to prioritize the more heavily traveled roads too, like Miller's Creek is one that's gotta be done. Three mile's gonna get done this year. Those are big roads and, but you know, we're trying to make sure that it affects all of the county. We're, you know, that we're not trying to focus on one area over another, but trying to deal with the most pressing ones. So if you do have a road issue that you think is, or if anybody's watching this and there's a road that needs special attention or immediate maintenance, all you have to do is pick the phone up and call the road department. We'll get a work order put in. But like I said, my goal is by the end of this term, is to have somewhere close to half the county roads paved over an eight-year period.
And this court's really dedicated to that. They're really dedicated to, to these roads and that's something I want everyone to know is this dedication. If it wasn't for the court, we wouldn't be able to do this and they've, they've helped a lot.
They, they've done a lot of, a lot of work out there. I, I'll thank them right now for Camp Creek and all those areas over in the Phelps the last few weeks you've guys got done. That's, that's wonderful. That's a blessing, you know, to us and to our people over there. We appreciate it.
So we finished up the Phelps area yesterday.
Yes.
We finished up everything that we had had for this year. We finished yesterday.
It's, it's great over there. Those, those folks are very happy and, and, you know, very much deserving of those roads. We appreciate it.
All right. Next item is treasurer's business. Frankie, just wanna do one of these. It's one motion, joint motion when we get through this.
I will, Judge.
My dog, I've gotta, I've gotta leave a little early today because I've got a family medical appointment that I've got to go to. And, all right. Before you do this, I don't think we need executive session right now. I'm gonna go ahead and just jump ahead of Frankie because I've just got three, three matters. One is to acknowledge correcting Penny May's pay rate to include his longevity. Second is to approve the resignation, acknowledge resignation of Lisa Ferguson effective eleven five twenty-four. To acknowledge resignation of Trenton Bentley effective eleven six twenty-four. And to, Penny, when did you start the role of this clerk? Is to raise Penny Burke's pay to a, or you're forwarding out, right? To a five A effective September, what? Twenty-third until we replace the clerk, because Penny's doing her job and Lisa's job right now. And I thought it would be fair since she's doing that to bump her up one pay grade until we hire a clerk to replace her. Because it's not fair for her to have to do two jobs. And that would be retroactive. My motion will be retroactive to September twenty-third. So, and we are taking applications for that position, by the way, if anybody's, has experiences, you know, a lot of typing, a lot of administrative. It's a hard job because they have to do all the minutes, they have to do all the court orders. They have to do all the research, maintain all the court records. They have to cover all the trail meetings and all the other bid openings, all that stuff. So, you know, I just, you know, and I didn't think it was fair to Penny that, that she's doing two jobs. And she's having to put a lot of extra time in. That will not be very long, but it will be retroactive. And we are, like I said, taking applications. So if anybody knows, if anybody's interested in that position, we are looking for someone. So that's my motion.
I'm, I second that motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Lewis. Any questions or discussions? Seeing the Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
I think that if someone's doing two jobs and I think you need to take care of our employees for sure.
Yeah, like I said, this, this, she'll go back, you'll revert, she'll, she's aware of this, she reverts back to her regular pay rate as soon as that position's filled. That may be before the next court meeting. It may not be. But that's where we are. All right, Frankie, why don't you do us a lump sum motion so we can expedite this?
In the amount of four hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents. Authorize a check to Jimmy Kaiser up to four thousand dollars for lodging expenses to take the Mack trucks back to the December auction in Alabama. Authorize a check to AEP in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents for three-phase power overhead line for the Wolf Pit Industrial Park. Those are AML funds. Authorize an EFT payment to Microsoft in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the annual Pike KY.gov emails because Microsoft no longer accepts checks. Authorize a check to Oracle Elevator in the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents for the semi-annual maintenance agreement on the two elevators in the Hall of Justice Building. And finally, to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending October thirty-first.
All right, is there a second? Is there a motion to approve the items as stated by the treasurer?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussion? Seeing the Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Any other business, Frankie? All right. All right, anything for me, the Department of Supervisors? I do, I do wanna say something real quick. I saw Jerry had just posted about if you're riding hillbilly trails, don't throw a cigarette out because we're getting fires popping up. At the recommendation of the Pike County Emergency Management Director, Nee Jackson, in consultation with the Division of Forestry. I have issued a burn ban. The all outdoor burning in Pike County is prohibited under my authority. And this ban will remain in force and effect until it is lifted or modified by further order of my office. We all remember last year how bad the smoke was. If you have people like me that have really bad allergies or but it also overwhelms, you know, people with COPD, breathing asthma, those kind of issues. But it also overwhelms our fire departments. I mean, we simply are having volunteer firefighters run everywhere trying to address forest fires that are about to get into homes or garages and those kind of things. So this burn ban will stay in effect until the recommendation is made to, by Nee or the Division of Forestry to, to lift that. Just wanted to mention that. All right, any other Department of Supervisors comments? Chuck, come on up. All right, so next Monday is Veterans Day. The solid waste department will not run. If you have a Monday pickup, it'll be picked up on Tuesday. If you have a Tuesday pickup, picked, picked up Wednesday. Wednesday is on Thursday, Thursday on Friday, and they will work Saturday, the following Saturday to get caught up. So you're not gonna miss a garbage pickup next week. But the courthouse will be closed in observation of Veterans Day next Monday. All right, anything else? Well, thank the court. Well, we want. Well, Freddie may recall that when he was jailer, that they would go down to the surplus auction and buy a bunch of old worn-out vehicles that the county couldn't junk, that the county couldn't keep running. Well, I mean, how, how many home meals are delivered by the solid waste program every year? Roughly, how many home meals are delivered? Yeah. So you're seventy-two to seventy-five thousand meals are delivered every year?
Yeah.
It's not an option not to have reliable vehicles to get people's food. And that's what the commitment we made is to get those. And what people don't realize, Diane, is the senior citizens program is not part of the fiscal court. It's not a county government office. But the five hundred thousand dollar subsidy and the other funds that we help provide, if we didn't do that, there wouldn't be a solid, a senior citizen program. And we just got a, about a two hundred thousand. And we just got a, about a two hundred thousand dollar reduction from the state Department of Aging because the ARPA money has run out. But the city of Pfeifel has chipped in thirty thousand, or is chipping in thirty thousand to help with the Pfeifel. Well, they're supposed to be sending it. I was told that they were. I heard that from the city manager directly. So the, the city has historically helped. They, they asked to be let out of it, but when they heard we got cut, they're, they're chipping in the thirty thousand this year. And, you know, there's people in the county, Freddie, that wanted to make it political. Hey, you had the board that operates the senior citizens, one member is elected from each senior citizen center. And then Diane serves because of her position. They voted to shut down two senior citizen centers because of lack of attendance. But it's also because of lack of funding from, I mean, you know, there's only so much money to go around. If the federal government increased the funding, two or three or four hundred thousand, you probably wouldn't have had to do that.
And it's like services, they make a scene around.
Well, and, and you know, I mean, you only had a smaller number of people going. And you can't, you can't keep a senior citizen center open for ten or twelve people a day. It's just not economically feasible. But not one person, even during the pandemic, missed a meal because the centers were shut down. But not one person that was on home meal delivery missed a meal. Not, and, you know, we worked to secure, Governor Beshear put probably, I can't remember the exact total, but it was over a million dollars in state funding when the Pfeifel Senior Citizen Center shut down. People were like, well, why do you build a new senior citizen center in Pfeifel when you shut down Phelps and Marlborough? Well, here's why. First of all, it was the most heavily attended senior citizen center in the county, probably more so than all the other centers combined. And your funding from the state and federal government is based on attendance. So if that center had been shut down, had not been rebuilt, the funding loss that would have resulted from that would have probably resulted in another senior citizen center or two being shut down. And it, you know, the government's looking at numbers. How many people are being served? And, you know, you've got a county that's eight hundred and eighty-eight square miles. It's not easy to provide those services, but we've been able to keep doing that. So.
Well, let me, let me say this. It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful program. Any, anything you do to help our elderly is, it's worth its weight in gold. You, we can't be good enough to our senior citizens. It's because of them is, they're the reason we are who we are. They raised us. They brought us up. They are our people. They're, you know, you, you can't be good enough to them. And let me say this while I'm sitting here dying right now. If there's anything that I can do to help support the Senior Citizens Program, the Meals on Wheels Program, don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. I will support that wholeheartedly and help our seniors any way I can. And if you do see some sort of way that, you know, maybe it's through a federal grant or whatever program, if you do see a way that we could get our Senior Citizens Program open in Phelps for those seniors over there, please let me know because that is being one of the hot topics that I've talked to folks about and, and a lot of them's brought it up. And, you know, there's a lot of very, very, very good, hard-working, tax-paying people in the Phelps majestic stopover area. And a lot of the elderly over there has worked hard. And they definitely deserve a Senior Citizens Program. Yeah. From the Kemper Center, yeah. But if you see a way that we could maybe get something started, some kind of, I would be all on board to help out if it's going and getting money in Frankfurt or whatever, let me know because I, I, I want to help our seniors for sure.
All right. Anything from the county attorney's office? Paul, Roy, y'all have anything? All right. Anybody? Commissioner Atkins, anything?
Yeah, Judge, the other Jim Abshire, his mother passed away. I'd like for everybody to keep her in.
Jimmy's mother did? I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that.
Lake Creek.
Yeah.
They got hurt, Lake Creek Church, Ray Saunders' church. And we took a hit to the co-company that I worked for last week. Good friend of mine, he was vice president and controller, Jason May, forty-three-year-old, passed away. Horrified. I spent Thursday evening before Friday morning, they done a stint talking to him. You know, I've been through it. Forty-eight-year-old, he's forty-three. He, he didn't survive it. He had a lot of complications and we buried him Saturday. I'd like for everybody to pray for his family too because, you know, it was a big shock. And I know they're all hurting. Our co, our whole company's hurting because Jason was sort of like a glue that held everybody together. But, and thank all the workers, you know, they've been doing a lot of work here and there. I've been out, I've seen them in Beach Creek. I've seen them over Phelps, Woodman, like I said, over in Stopover. Want to thank you all the workers. They've done a good job. That's it.
Great job.
And welcome our new comrade here. Hopefully, he, he can handle the rough talks we get from time to time. But we get some good things too. But that's it, Judge.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, you have anything else, sir?
I'd just like to, once again, thank everyone for their support and for your all's help and all my supporters out there. I really appreciate you. You've entrusted me with the job and I'll do the very best that I can to make you happy and do the right thing.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Lewis to the court. I think he's a good guy. And I'd also like to thank all the workers, especially all the blacktop. They have done so good with their blacktop in each year and everything. And we've got a little more to go, but I think we'll get it.
I do believe, I honestly do believe that we will make our list. You know, at the beginning of this, I really was doubtful that we would be able to get all those roads, but I really think we will get them all.
Yeah, I looked at the list and I, I think it'd be all right.
You do?
Should, should be good. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anything. Is there any other business come before the court? If not, then before we entertain a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Lewis, you want to say the, close us out with a word of prayer?
Heavenly Father, Lord God, as we come unto you today, we want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to conduct business for our county. Lord, I pray that in each and everything that we spoke about today and it's been brought up, that you would just pour a blessing out upon it, Lord, and, and that you would see us through. Heavenly Father, as they spoke about the ones that are out there that needs meals today, our seniors in our county, God, I pray a special blessing upon our seniors throughout this country. I pray, God, that our people would always watch out for them and always take care of them above all, our seniors and our children. They need our leadership and they need our help. And Father, may we always be found serving them and trying to help them the best we can. Lord, we ask you until we come back to watch over us and in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we're adjourned.